I will ask Commissioner Brooks Matthews to lead us in the pledge and have the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Our Father, we do thank you for this day and for this opportunity we have. We thank you for the rain. We thank you for these who are here to impart and share and direct the county in its business. We thank you for our citizens. We thank you for their hard work and perseverance to make this county the county that it is. We ask that you would be with us today as we meet and talk about the issues that we're facing. We ask that you would direct us in the way that you would have us to go. We thank you for our county employees and the hard work that they give each day for each of us here in the county. All these things we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Commissioner Matthews. As you can see, we've got a pretty long agenda this morning, so we're gonna move as quickly as possible. Glad to see everyone here today. A reminder, please silence all electronic devices. At this time, we will move to item three on the agenda and have a board of elections update. Ms. Jones?
Yeah, good morning. Thank you for having me here today. I know you guys are busy as we are over at board of elections. So just have a quick few updates for you guys. I know typically when people throw numbers at me, I have a hard time remembering them all, so I've given everybody a handout, which is also on the screen, basically to let you know, first of all, that our registration numbers are now up to over eighty-three thousand. So that has us the fourth largest in the state. So I know you guys are seeing a lot of the growth coming into Harnett County, but we've got to think about that too as well on the election scale. We do have four early voting locations. We have uniform hours across all locations. And then below that, I have the numbers of early voting as well as absentee by mail. Turnout so far, this is as of yesterday, last night, I did include a chart that shows the comparison between two thousand eighteen and the two thousand twenty-two election, and you can see how we're kind of right on point with where we were in two thousand eighteen. Some days, we're a little bit above. The only difference is two thousand eighteen, there was a state law that made us have an extra day. So that's why that line's a little bit longer at the beginning. And then you can also see that the rest of this week, anticipated numbers greatly increasing as people come out this final few days of early voting, especially that Friday and Saturday. So we are on target with where we should be. And then, of course, I can't come before the elections, before the commissioners, without again reminding you of some of our needs. I know you all have seen our CIP that's been out there, is kind of in the future planning. We did a presentation before about some of our office needs that we have. I mean, we still, those are still some pending things we deal with daily, having enough office space and storage, accessible voting areas. I know the commons area is very tight in there. You've got other departments in there, other people doing business with health and DSS. So those are things that we still need assistance with, you know, moving forward through the election process, especially as the county tends to grow. And then, of course, we are currently fully staffed at four. It's been a couple of years for us to get at four. So we do would like to request in maybe the future budget in addition to half person. But overall, for the elections, things are running fairly smoothly. You have your few little things here and there as the poll workers are getting back in the routine of things, electioneers and voters all in one area. But as far as our turnout and our numbers, things are looking really good. Do you all have any questions?
Under your needs more accessible and accommodating voting areas?
Mm-hmm.
I hope that means looking for places to replace you voting at schools?
Yes. So the board is, after this election, they're gonna look at some of our polling locations to see what we can do as far as voting locations. Early voting is especially challenging, no matter where we are, because it's two and a half weeks of early voting. So no matter what building we're in, we are gonna be an inconvenience to that location. So we try to find locations that are large enough, handicap accessible, and can accommodate up to a thousand some people per day. Unfortunately, in Harnett County schools, it pretty much checks all those boxes. We typically in the past have had early voting at the schools on weekends. But legislation has changed that where we have to have all sites open every day, which puts us in the schools during the week. So after this election, once we get through this, because we don't want to be inconsistent between a primary and a general election, the board has said they will look at locations and reevaluate that. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I think your report is really accurate as to what is going on. But take under consideration, when you're looking for other facilities to hold the elections and all, make sure you have facilities that have bathrooms.
Mm-hmm.
Because it's been a challenge out there. We'll be using the government complex on the inside going in the bathroom. You all stopped that and you expected us to walk from where we were working in the election to the social service department or either to health department. Social service department is not bad. They don't side this. All of those facilities are closed.
Mm-hmm.
We had one woman out there on Saturday, had to go to the bathroom and nowhere to go but sheeps.
Mm-hmm.
Citizens should not be put through that to vote. I thank you and the manager here, Mr. Trout, for working out something. And those porta potties out there, it's not our deal, but at least it's something. People should not have to have stumbling blocks to use the bathroom. So when you take all of that into consideration, take the needs of the voters, they in under consideration too.
Yes.
And some people think it's nothing, but it is. If you stand out there for seventeen days, it should not be, it should not be like that.
Yeah, I agree. The state law does not allow for anybody not in the act of voting to enter the polling place, which is why we had to put a stop to that. The citizens that coming in to vote, they are allowed to use the bathrooms. But I will say, when the feasibility study people came out, that was something we suggested that we have separate entrances for, you know, public in voting as well as a different location, maybe for bathroom versus office. That way, they are able to be accommodating to the electioneers as well.
I thank you for considering that because it is very important.
Mm-hmm.
And I thank you all for listening and trying to work out a solution for the citizen. It's terrible. When you have to walk from there all the way up to this building to use the bathroom?
It's a distance.
Take under consideration that senior citizens have bladder problems. Most of them do. Because as years go by, the bladder goes down. So I'm just asking.
I don't want to tell myself. I just have three kids.
Four years ahead to think about these things.
Yes, I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCoy. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Thank you. You guys have a great day.
All right. Deputy Hornsby, talk about the Sheriff's PILE program.
Good morning, Deputy One.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I came this morning. I wanted to give an update on our program, some of the things we're doing, some of our needs. Right now, our program was still after school itself. In the summer, we're doing camps. We're back to our pre-COVID numbers, anywhere from sixty to seventy kids a week. Our main focus is still on the individual one-on-one mentoring sports instead of team sports. We've been very lucky with the JCPC grant we received that enabled us to start after-school tutoring to go along, making a complete program with our mentoring program. But right now, we are serving a lot of kids from the Western Party camp, which, you know, as a deputy living on the west side and as a school resource officer, that has always been the hardest to reach and, in my opinion, the most neglected part of the county. And also, it's a high number of juveniles and juvenile crime in that area of the county. So right now, we are making two and three trips to Western Harnett and the Overhill School to bring kids to the PILE center. We only have one small vehicle. But we're having to turn, practically turn kids away due to transportation because it's easy to pick them up at the school, but very difficult when I have to take them home down Melwels Road, Buffalo Lakes Road, because the students from Harnett Central and Harnett Central Middle and Shawtown, they able to take the bus to school. But I wanted to address that. We need some help with some transportation. I don't know. We're trying to get us a van right now to help with that. Another thing we're looking at with the JCPC grant, we, originally, the PILE program had complete control of that wing. It's like a T ring, it's like a T, basically. When we started, we were approached by the Boys and Girls Club about sharing space. Well, the county made it clear it was our decision at the time whether or not to share that space. I made the decision and talked with some people, not just me, and decided, well, I did fear I would need the space down the road. I still stand by the right thing to do because two, those two programs have transformed a community and an area. So I agree that Ms. McCoy, she was at the time pushed it for the Boys and Girls Club to use some of that space that we gave up. And we're not trying to duplicate them at all because we, they're handling kids from first grade and I guess kindergarten up to sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And most of our kids are in the higher grades. But now, with the tutoring program, we have been given permission to use what was going to originally be, I guess, the community room. We're using one side of it, but there is another, there's a bathroom in between it, and then there's another side to it. We, we, it's empty space now. It's not the room that Reentry used. Reentry moved out with that down Hall, but right now, we cannot even increase our tutoring program without access to that. And we are, we're just out of space with so many kids. Because the tutoring is very, very important, but also the mentoring and the one-on-one, the wrestling, the boxing, the fitness is also very important, y'all, what these young kids are going through. With people our age, we sometimes don't understand all of what they're going through. We're a generation that didn't have parents. Opiate, this opiate problem has practically wiped out a generation. So it's more important now for programs like ours and schools to really step up, and we're doing that. The kids at our program now are really struggling. We know every one of their problems. But once again, the transportation has caused me to do more time driving than I am actually mentoring and working with these kids. And one more thing, really, I can't even handle it, I'll be honest with you. But my tutoring coordinator is only allowed to work with JCPC stuff. I would really like to ask for a part-time person and access to that room. I think we could really increase our kids and also increase how effective I am because I am working till eight o'clock at night now. So it's well worth the investment if we could figure out a way in the county to get a person for twenty to thirty hours a week and use of that room. I can figure out the transportation, whether it's a fundraiser to buy the van or what. The room and the part-time person would really, really help our program, I'd say.
Any questions for Deputy Hornsby?
I've got a question. First, I appreciate your concern and all down on the western side. It really is neglected, and I definitely do see the need. I understand that you're extremely stressed in right now and you do need some help, but is it possible to think maybe a future plan to have something like two programs, you know, another site down on the western side?
Absolutely. And I would love for that to happen. But it was a ten-year struggle to get this one as a volunteer to get it funded. And we, it would more than payback. Of course, kids have an positive place to go. But absolutely, it would be awesome to have one Father Torch eighty-seven with the idea of the mentoring. You know, there's a YMCA out there, but it's not the same thing as the one-on-one communication, for sure.
Thank you. I appreciate everything you do.
I got a question for Mr. Hornsby. What is the average age for the kids in the class? They had sixty to seventy a week. What is the average age?
Well, they're not just in the tutoring program, for the whole program, the rest. But most of them, but most of them are from sixth grade up. And in the tutoring program through high school, the tutoring program, though, we go from middle school up because we don't want to duplicate the good, well, there's no need to reinvent the wheel for the Boys and Girls Club.
You talking about you need a van for transport the kids back and forth and pick them up, take them home?
Yes, sir, because, Ms. Johnson, with my transportation, I had to make two trips to Overhills and to the western.
What do you use now?
A van, excuse me, a small SUV that was donated to us.
Okay. Do you think a big van would do it?
Oh, absolutely. Yes, sir. It would sure be a great start. You know, I really, we've not even touched what we can do to get more. I don't even, I'm not actively recruiting new students right now. I certainly don't turn any around, but I just can't handle anymore without some help and the transportation.
Yeah, I hear a lot of good things about your program. Be congratulated on it.
Oh, yes. Our PILE program and Raleigh-Rosewood program in Dunn. You know, a lot of people talking about what they were gonna do as far as working with children and mental health, but I think those two programs exceed any programs your bigger cities have. As far as, even Raleigh and Fayetteville do not have a police program with the one-on-one mentoring like we do in this small community compared to Wake County and Charlotte.
Deputy Hornsby, have you spoken with Assistant County Manager Price about maybe availability of a Hartz bus that's not being used? Have y'all talked about that?
No, sir. I can definitely look into that and see if there may be availability.
I mean, that would, that would cut you down to one trip.
Yes. And the 4-H program, I might, Mr., I can't remember the name, they're willing to help us with the van. Oh, they have a used van. A lot of miles on it, but it would be fine in the county. I wouldn't, but the problem is that is getting it moved. If we move it over to the PILE program itself, because we have our separate 501(c), it's just a huge increase on our budget on fuel and insurance and everything.
It may be a situation of where you just have a loan-type agreement. I don't know.
Yeah, we're working through some issues related to an available van and that would need to be voted to donate to them, and so we're working through that issue. We just haven't brought it yet before the board for consideration.
Thank you, sir.
Well.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to say that I am so proud of the organization. I'm so proud of the work that you're doing out there. It was a struggle. I was involved for day one, ten years ago, for us to have this. And people did not believe, did not believe that this power was gonna be successful. You all have made a great, great transformation of that whole community. And for those kids, it is very, very important that we move forward with doing whatever we can to keep this program going, especially with this problem of opioids that we have in Harnett County. I want to say thank you because I've watched the work that you do. It's not easy. It's not easy, but I've watched those kids out there too. Those kids are so engaged in, in the programs that you offer them and the opportunity for them to move forward in their life to be productive citizens. So I just want to say thank you. It's, thank you, that's all I can say because I know from the beginning until now, it's amazing where we have come and this county has come as far as this power program, the one here in Littleton as well as the one in Dunn. Y'all have made some great tributes to the young people's lives in this county.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. All right, Mr. Trout, you want to talk about the terminal contract?
Yeah, I have some, some good news here as it relates to this project. We received the bids and the bids came in at an appropriate level. We have brought forward with you a recommendation to hire Jackson Builders Incorporated to do the project. So Coley has a little more information. Obviously, he started on this project and as we're transitioning here as it relates to the operations at the airport, he started this and so I wanted him to cover a little more on this process.
Thank you, Brent. Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Hope everybody's doing well. Good news, as Brent mentioned, as one of your top priorities as far as where the county stands, Harnett Regional Jetport. Just to bring you up to speed, we have finished up the lighting project with LED lights, tremendous asset for our airport there a couple of months ago. In phase two of our apron expansion, well over four and a half million dollar project, we received grant funding for that. That's going extremely well. And now I come for you this morning with the little bid of Jackson Builders for construction of a new terminal. So let me go through this briefly. You have this in your packet and I'll just kind of summarize for you. On October 12th, the bids were open. We did receive four bids, Jackson Builders, KMD Construction, Daniels and Daniels and Cooper. So as we go through, Jackson Builders has the North Carolina Licensing's Board of General Contractors with classification of building and financial limitation of unlimited. They are pre-qualified as a bidder with NC DOT and provided a bid bond in accordance with the project specifications. In addition, the project was also advertised as DB Eagle 1% and they did meet that as well. So the bids came in at Jackson Builders, and this includes bid alternate one, which was also the parking lot at $5,116,876.50. Next low bid was KMD at $5,183,328.59, a difference of $66,452.9 from bid, from the two lowest. The other two were at 5.2 and at 5.8. So as Brent mentioned, this is a, actually a voting section in your agenda. So if you're comfortable in moving forward with Jackson Builders, we would recommend that. They are out of Goldsboro, North Carolina. They have been in business since 1974. We have checked their references and we feel confident with moving forward with this. Be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioner, based on the fact that the jet port advisory board occurs with staff and recommends Jackson Builders, I make a motion that we award this contract to Jackson Builders of Goldsboro, North Carolina.
Second that.
I have a motion in second. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. No opposition carried unanimously, Madam Clerk.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chairman, actually, one other item in this particular one is to allow County Manager Mr. Brent Trout to move forward with authorization of signatures. Obviously, you're aware this is very time sensitive, so I guess that requires another vote.
Yeah, we want to have authority to be able to go ahead and have me sign on the contract once we get it back from them rather than having to wait for the timing of another board meeting and delay an additional week or two depending on that time.
Chairman, if you're willing to do that, if you'll sign today, I'll get it sent to them this afternoon.
Okay, I'll make a motion if we authorize County Manager Brent Trout to sign this contract.
Let's take a that.
I have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carried unanimously, Madam Clerk.
Let's build the thing there. I said, let's build the thing.
Let's move on, that's right.
All right. I guess we also need to approve the terminal construction capital project ordinance.
Yes, sir, I'll explain that if you want me to.
Please do.
Okay, so if you recall, a few months ago, we did one, a capital project ordinance in reference, so hopefully we would get the bipartisan infrastructure law grant. We would not receive that based on the airports and what was happening around the United States. So what I'm coming for today is a new capital, terminal construction project, capital project ordinance. That's a mouthful. All right, so it's $6 million and it's SCIF funding, that's state capital and infrastructure funds, and it requires no local match. Obviously, the terminal was built in the 1980s and you understand what's going on with putting that together. Professional services, we've got $409,350. Construction of what you just approved was $5,116,877. Contingency, 473-773, for a total of $6 million. So that's your project capital ordinance.
I make a motion that we approve this capital funding ordinance for the construction of the jet port terminal.
Second.
I have a motion in second. Any, any questions or comments from the board? Hearing, hearing no comments or questions. All in favor of approving, please raise your hand. Carried unanimously, Madam Clerk. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, let me say thank you to each of you for your support. We look forward to starting this project and it's going to obviously be a tremendous asset for our county, for the airport as well as economic development activity. So thank you to each of you.
The projected start date is December 12th. Right now, the way the current contract reads, the start date would be December 12th for actual construction of the project.
All right, Ms. McCully.
Good morning, Commissioners. The library is requesting permission to apply for one-time, non-recurring state aid from the North Carolina Department of Cultural Resources. These funds are separate in addition to the annual funds that we receive each year. These are part of the U.S. Treasury's Office allotment as part of the state fiscal rescue funds under the American Rescue Act. The amount that Harnett County is to receive is $108,352. There's no local match required and we're planning to use these funds to add to our current budget to help offset the cost of library consolidation.
So what's the amount?
Would just be added to our, our current operating budget.
It's a pleasure, the board.
No match, child. I think we should do it.
Consensus of the board is we will approve this if you'll add it to the consent agenda for Monday meeting.
Ms. McCully, real quick before you go, what's going on with the library idea down at the old Ben Haven?
Ben Haven.
Is that not going to be happening now?
We hope that it's going to be happening. We've pushed that forward in the capital improvement plan for consideration for this upcoming year, fully funded.
When you receive the CIP, you'll see that it's scheduled for '24.
Yeah, because I know that we discussed it.
It ended up being over $400,000 to outfit with the proper materials and equipment, which was more than we could absorb with the other funding that we had with all the consolidation items going on. We didn't want to try and tackle that as well and do it poorly to start with. We want to do it correctly and so we added money into the CIP to accomplish that project in '24.
Good deal. Yeah, I know that we had discussed it a couple of months ago and that it was going to happen and then I hear rumor mill down on my side of town where it's like, oh, it's not happening.
It's still going to happen, just not here.
Good deal, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCully. All right, Mr. Smith.
Good morning. Good morning, sir. This morning, I bring before you a request for a position in our Fire Marshal's office. As you're aware, we took over the inspections in the city of Dunn back around July period. We have a contract with those folks for $45,850 a year. We have a 3% increase in annual increase built into that contract. And what we would like to do is hire a full-time, 40-hour-a-week, Monday through Friday inspector, deputy fire marshal to be that point of contact for that area, to kind of manage that area of Dunn. We picked up about 896 more inspections, more occupancies there to look at. We would need an additional $12,603 in benefits for that position to finish out the fiscal year. This is going to allow us to have somebody as a point of contact for the city. That's both for the inspections and the planning issues that would be going on on new construction or any type of renovation on businesses. You have any questions?
So will the contract with the city of Dunn cover the expense for this added position?
It will cover everything but $12,603 to finish the fiscal year and then what we'll look for next year is we'll put that into our personnel budget. It's mainly benefits.
It will cover 100% next year?
Well, we'll have to build it into our regular budget. With the 3%, that will still be short as far as benefits go.
So you're saying $12,000 for the remainder of this fiscal year?
Yes, to cover benefits and a small portion of the salary. Salary's at $48,160.
Will this position be solely for Dunn?
They are going to be to cover that Dunn, to get that. They've been without an inspector there for quite a while and there's a lot of work that needs to be done out there to make sure that we're providing that customer service they, they need out there.
If we're providing the coverage for them, why are they not paying for it?
Well, we, we've got a contract and when we got in there and we started looking at some of these occupancies, we've got some work to do. And we're just trying to get a, one point of contact that, that city can deal with, the planner can deal with, so that we're not having to bounce them around from whoever's on duty that day.
The question was, why didn't our contract cover the full cost of this position?
That, when originally, we, we had looked at, this was prior to the 10% raise that received for county employees last year. Originally, it would have been covered and we hadn't looked at providing a position there. We were trying to get into that initially to look to see what type of work this was going to be and what kind of conditions some of the occupancies were in.
All right, I mean, I think we're going to need to look at our contract with them and it's obvious related to the cost that is not covered by the contract and reevaluate what we have. This person will be available to work in other parts, even though their focus isn't Dunn, they will be available to us to do other inspections, to cover other areas. We have an inspector on vacation or sick or something like that. So even though it's not covering the full cost, they are available to us in other areas of the county. Their focus though will be Dunn and so we'll look to make modifications to the contract with Dunn going forward.
And they'll also be on that on-call schedule for fire investigations. We'll hire, it'll be a full deputy fire marshal as far as training goes, that full spectrum.
Yes, ma'am. Will we be responsible for the $12,000 next year?
Well, for the benefits portion of it. Yeah, this will finish, the $12,000 will finish out this fiscal year.
So what would be, what would it cost us next year?
Next year's benefits, I believe, I was talking to Lisa, we were looking at $24,000 for the, all the benefits.
And that will be on the county?
Yes, yes, yes.
I mean, is it possible to go back and revise this contract that we have with Dunn?
We will. I don't think, when we, when we looked at the contract, the cost for that position was not fully known.
Yeah.
Probably shouldn't have gone on the contract then, right? No?
At, at the time, we, actually, we hadn't even looked at a position for that and the $45,000 at the time would have covered it. This was prior to raises and everything else that had gone over the last year when that contract was signed.
I have another question. So this $12,000 is for the finish this year out. And this is for the benefit package, you're saying? For the employees' benefit package?
Yeah, it's their benefit package, right?
Okay. Now, are we paying for the other towns and all benefit packages like this?
We, we contract with the other towns, but we base that on the occupancies. A lot of my part-time personnel cover those smaller municipalities and in my daytime, fire marshal covers those areas. But we base that on the occupancies there.
Okay. I'm not opposed to it, but I just think that we should know what we are voting for as far as the expenditures. So I agree with the manager, we should look at that contract. And then we make, I think that we should wait until we look at that, compare that with the other towns and then make that decision.
Let's see, Commissioner McCoy, and I don't, do not disagree with her. I want to wait until we go back and try to renegotiate the contract before we approve this. Is that, what's the opinion of the board?
That's what I'm suggesting. I mean, it's up to the board, it's what they do because it seems like the position is needed, but I need to know, we need to know exactly
I agree.
How much the cost is going to be for us. I mean, we're not against, I'm not against it at all. But I don't do business without knowing.
But I think before we approve it, we need to
We need to know.
We need to know and need to have, try to renegotiate the contract.
So when, when does this terms of this contract end?
This is a three-year contract.
And I'm pretty sure there are clauses that allow us to terminate the contract. I mean, I don't have it in front of me, but we usually have to clause to terminate for various reasons. We can look into that.
So I guess what I'm hearing is that the termination has been, it's going to be more involved than what was originally suspected.
Yeah, just based on, on the numbers, yes, sir.
So then, then I agree with Commissioner McCoy. I have no, have no problem in trying to assist in this matter as we've done with some other municipalities, but at the same time, if we're seeing that this is not a break even, then I think we do need to go back and reassess going forward.
Yes, sir.
I agree.
Okay. Commissioner, okay. All right, consensus of the board is that you'll go back and try to renegotiate this contract to cover the additional $12,000 before we approve it.
Okay. All right. I got another item for you.
Yes, sir.
This is concerning the assistance to firefighters radio grant acceptance for EMS. This is a grant that we've been applying for as part of the original CIP process for the original CIP grant years ago to cover radios for EMS. We did receive an award from FEMA for the AFG for $470,290. There is a cost share of $42,000 with that, 753, and also a grant writers fee that we have, a 2% grant writers fee for that. What this project will do is we'll wrap up the Viper radio project with this funding, the ARPA funding we've received and the Chiefs Association grant that they received. This will wrap that up. What we looked at for the cost share, this was done a couple of years ago when we first started applying for this grant on an annual basis, was to, now that that CIP project is being taken care of with other funding, we would take the cost share and that grant writers fee from the CIP money that had been put away for that project. So we're looking at about $427,000 of equipment for right around $50,000 cost share, including the grant writers fee.
Any, any questions from the board about this? What's the feelings of the board of, the board, consensus of the board to approve this?
No, I don't have a problem with it.
All right. The consensus of the board is to approve this and we'll put it on the consent agenda for Monday to be approved.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, Mr. Snipes.
Mr. Chairman, we're asking for the approval to replace two hot water heaters at the Sheriff's Office to Dale Mechanical for $180,000. We have checked our reference system, everything checked out good. We just would like to move forward if we could, would you, sir? Do y'all have any questions?
Has everyone had a chance to review the, the bids? Any, any questions for Mr. Snipes about the, uh, replacement of the hot water heaters? If it's the agreement of the board, we will approve this on Monday at our meeting, then. Okay, we'll put that on the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Sure. Thanks, sir. All right. Mr. Snipes, you want to talk about Long Meadow Lane and Old Maple Court?
Uh, yes, sir. Morning, everyone. Again, we have another resolution for requests from NC DOT. These are some older roads that they're catching up on to bring them into the system. And it seems, it's compliant with, uh, with, with our regulations and so forth. So it's just a, this is a good move on their behalf.
Ready in agreement to do these to DOT? Please add that to the consent agenda.
Thanks, sir.
Good, thanks, sir. All right, item twelve, Mr. Snipes, is that you or Mr. Locklear?
Um, yes, sir. So backup for discussion is, um, is an, is an item that we had, um, tabled from, uh, from last month's, uh, night meeting for rezoning of approximately ninety-four acres from commercial to RA thirty. Owner is Ms. Catherine Medley and Mr. Jeffrey Thomas. And applicant was RP Wellens Land and Development LLC. Of course, this is out on near old four twenty-one, uh, four twenty-one intersection. And, um, so the thoughts were, um, staff recommend denial to, i.e., keep the existing commercial. Planning board recommend approval of the application to change it to RA thirty. And, um, so we're, we're just back to discuss options, thoughts, and see if there's any new direction or if we should proceed as, um, as submitted. Do you have any thoughts, Mark, or anything?
I would just add that we have reached out to the applicant, um, just via email. And I think they're open for discussion this morning, if I said that correctly is the way you replied back to me. And I've also reached out to Christian with Economic Development to talk about, you know, what is a, a logical amount of, uh, commercial if we go down the road of preserving some of the commercial that is out there? Which I said the applicant at the meeting, I believe, felt like they were open to that, or open to the discussion of that. So that kind of brings us to where we're at today. And, uh, I don't know how, I've never really had this situation, so I don't know how to lead the, the discussion on, on this, so to speak.
Well, I've, I've lived into this extensively since our last meeting. And folks, commercial is not going to come until we get rooftops. Seventy houses are not going to bring commercial. So we're setting aside land on what might happen. I'm opposed to that. When, when the development gets to the point, when the residential development gets to the point that it makes sense for a restaurant or some retail company to come in, they'll come. At that time, we'll figure out how we're going to get the utilities to them. But until then, I don't think we need to set aside land for what might happen. I think we need to go ahead and approve this residential request, rezoning request, and, uh, put this to bed at our next meeting.
Yeah, I drove out to the property, uh, just a few days ago that we're discussing. And also is looking into it as well as far as the utilities that are out there and what it's going to take. And I mean, it's just not feasible for us to maintain it as commercial.
I agree.
Especially the, kind of the location and where it's at and go off that, the old road that's there. Plus, uh, you know, the, we heard from the landowner, she came in as well, you know, and it's been in their family for however long. And mind you, I hate how a lot of this land in the county, you know, is going to developers, however comma, um, for a family farm that generations ago, you know, it used to be farmed. Now these people aren't using it anymore for that, and it's a burden on the family. Um, and that same land where they can get forty, fifty thousand dollars an acre and has not made that before in its history. I, I really don't see how we can keep that from, you know, family making that decision. So I would be in agreement for approval for this as well. Mr. Chair, if I may, I, I also have, uh, looked at this quite extensively since our last meeting, talked with Mr. Lockham, uh, several others. I'm inclined to agree with the statement Mr. Pope made at our last meeting regarding, uh, commercial along the road frontage there. That road frontage is not even on Highway four twenty-one. So I think you're going to have a real challenge to ever attract commercial to the old, to build along the old US four twenty-one. Also, that land's been commercial for what, do I remember, twenty-three years? It was on commercial, something like that? And, and we've still, i- i- if we were serious about developing that into commercial land, I believe we would have done something to upgrade the infrastructure to that piece of land before now. And as was also mentioned, if, if that's not done, I suspect it'll sit there another twenty-three years before any, with no commercial development. So I'm inclined to agree with the chair and vice chair on this one, uh, and would be supportive of approval for residential lots.
Mr. Chairman, after looking over the
I would, I would like to speak on this issue, if you'd like.
Sure, yes, ma'am.
My thoughts are, we need commercial land in this county. Because contractors are buying up all the land and building houses. Rooftops don't bring jobs here. And, um, but I had to think about this. The land has been sitting there all these years and difficult that it would have if company dude would come into consideration for this land. It's highly unlikely. And I won't say like, he said that if it was going to happen, it, it would have happened. Because Harney County has just started moving forward. I mean, we have not been in this position, uh, until the last, I would say, four or five years. But then too, and my reasons for, uh, thinking about voting against it is because Lee County is in a position that might would bring some industry here with the mega site. And I know we put a lot of, uh, funding into that mega site in hope that we'll bring some jobs here. So, uh, I, I have decided that it's in rural area of this county, you know. I'm not going to oppose to it. I'm going to go ahead on and move forward to it. But I'm asking you all to consider, Harney County cannot survive on roofs, rooftops. We have got to have some jobs for our citizens. This land may not be the site, and I understand that. But we've got to start thinking in terms of bringing some jobs to this county. So I'm not going to oppose it. I'll go along with it simply because of where it's located and because of the problems that it will cause us, uh, even to, uh, set it up for industrial land. And I, I've just got to say that I'm telling you what, how I feel about it. But I know the families who had this land all this time, I'm not going to oppose to it. But that is my reason for not opposing to it.
If, if this was industrial land, I would, uh, I'd be in favor of preserving it. But this is commercial. And the two are different. Industrial land, like Ms. McCoy said, companies are what's going, industrial companies are what's going to bring jobs to the county. Uh, commercial will bring a few jobs. But like I said, commercial's not coming until we've got significant amount of rooftops. And there's not a significant amount of rooftops in that area. Okay? That's my opinion. Did you want to say something, Commissioner?
Yeah, I'll just make it short, it's already been said. But after looking over the proposed zoning change and discussing this and looking at the property, I would be inclined to be in favor of this voting change. Voting change.
Well, I think the consensus of the board is to approve the rezoning since we've already had the public hearing. We can put this on the consent agenda and, can't we?
I think it needs to be a separate, a separate voting.
Okay. If you put that as a separate item on the agenda for, uh, for Mondays, uh, we'll approve it at that time. Or at least we'll vote on it.
You're right.
I'm not going to say we'll approve it. Anything can happen between now and then. Okay. Mr. Locklear, the comprehensive land use plan?
Thanks, sir. Make sure this thing's working. All right, perfect. Thank you. All right, Jay's passing out a few, a few, um, I, I think he actually has a, um, the copies. Do y'all have the screen, the PowerPoint? Does that show up in front of you all?
Yes, sir.
Right there? Okay, perfect. Well, it's probably not necessary for us to plan out that. But as, as we're all aware, as we, as we just went through the process we obviously just went through, Harney County's growing. And, and it's important for us to, um, take a break, stop every five, seven years, and look at our comprehensive land use plan and make a deci, and, and make changes. Look at areas that maybe like the area we just looked at. Look at that area and decide, um, is it properly, is it, is it, are we doing it, are we doing it right on the land use plan, so to speak? So, um, so we've come to you today to, uh, to talk about updating our comprehensive land use plan. Uh, what you see before you are the plans, uh, that have become before what we're at today. Obviously, in nineteen seventy-seven, in nineteen eighty-seven, which I was even shocked myself that, that we were doing a really good job at updating our land use plan every ten years. Harney County wasn't growing a whole lot, obviously, during that time. But after nineteen ninety-nine, we did a small update, probably through DCA would be my guess, Division of Community Assistance. I'm sure all these plans were done through that from the state, basically. But we, uh, we stopped doing anything until 2015, which was the last time that we had a comprehensive growth plan, uh, that was done. I took part in that plan. I was, uh, I've done a lot to, uh, you know, to help develop that plan. But I can tell you, it was done on a shoestring budget, and it was very basic. And we didn't have, we didn't put a lot of money into it. And a big part of that plan was an actual economic development plan, which is the last one that you see on there. So when you look at the plan altogether, you know, she's about that thick. But I understand that half of that is an economic development plan. So the rest of it is what we use today as our land use plan. But I'll say that we had some really good things happen from that plan. We had a really, we had a lot of good, um, goals and, and, and things that it asked us to look at. And our department, we, we were able to do that. And the three plans, there were the three things that you see at the bottom are spinoffs essentially from that plan that said, hey, you need to go look at your northwest area plan. Obviously, that's the part where we're growing up to the county, and we've done that. And, uh, and then it said you should look at doing a bike and pedestrian plan. So we partnered with, uh, Parks and Rec, and, and we've, and we've done that plan. And then more recently, uh, we just finished our overlay for the Ed Mead Corridor, which was also a recommendation from that plan as well. So, um, 2015, we, we, and there's a whole host of things, I could go on for days, that, that recommendations from that plan that we have actually done. And we're actually running out of things to do from that plan. So it's time to, uh, it's time to update our, our comprehensive land use plan. So a lot of people ask, well, what is your comprehensive land use plan? What does it do? It basically sets the vision for Harney County. Leadership has changed. It, it changes all the time. It can change at every election. And we have a few new faces that are on the board that, that wasn't here in 2015. So it's important, um, that, that everybody goes through this exercise of, of looking at our, our plan and deciding, hey, is this the way we want to grow going forward? Every time, every time leadership changes, I think it's a good idea. And that's the reason why they recommend us do it every five to seven years. And we're right in that seven-year mark, obviously. Basically, you, you look at your goals, policies, and programs, and, and it, obviously, like, it's obvious that it presents, that it guides us going into the future. And, uh, it gives, what I like about it, more importantly, is we all stand up at these, we have these hearings that we've recently went through, and we see the public come out, and they, they show either they're for something or they're against it, or maybe we should, what are you thinking for even looking at this? And we didn't have an opportunity to look at that area. But it involves the public, and it allows them to really become engaged with the process. And so that is probably one of the biggest, um, things that you get out of updating your plan is the public, as well as our leadership. We have new managers. Everybody has a, has an opportunity to have a say in what, how we think Harney County should grow, uh, going forward. So, and then at the end of the day, uh, we have our text, we have new maps, uh, that tells the department how we want to grow. So when we come up for these zoning changes like we have, um, it, it usually makes it a lot easier because we've already, already looked at an area and we said, hey, look, this is the way, uh, things should be. And so it makes that process, hopefully, it, it makes that process a lot easier going forward. And then at the end of the day, North Carolina general statute says you have to update it. So we're required to do it. Our current plan, as I mentioned, the 2015 plan is pretty basic. I mean, uh, we didn't have a ton of money to look at a lot of things, so we had to look at the big things. So we looked at transportation, public utilities, parks, and natural resources. Obviously, I mentioned we had a big economic development component to that plan. And then obviously, the thing that we were more, uh, we wanted to see more than anything from the, um, development services standpoint was the land use map was updated from that earlier, uh, literations of it. So, um, and, and always keep in mind, transportation, we have a CTP, um, that, that does that from DOT. We're getting ready to go through that process. Public utilities, they have their capital improvement plan that shows how they want to grow. Parks and, uh, parks, they obviously have their plans that they have. But this is an opportunity for us to look at all of that and put it in one spot. Maybe it's not the nuts and bolts that you'll see in their specific plans, but it, it allows us to look at all these different aspects of, of a plan and, uh, and make smart decisions going forward. This isn't a complete list, but these are some of the things that I've heard loud and clear from this board and members of the public leadership that says, these are the things that we probably need to be looking at adding to those. So new things that we look to add, uh, to the plan is we want to look at our housing, of course. We want to look at the exit, we want to do an existing market analysis. And then obviously, we want to take a look at affordable housing, which has been a hot button topic here lately. We want to see, you know, is there something, maybe, maybe we're not in a situation now where we need to do something, but maybe in a couple of years, that, that'll be something that, that, that we're facing. So, um, so this, this will be a good opportunity and a good place to do that. Obviously, the jet port, you just heard all the new things and the great things that we have going on at our jet port with the new terminal and fixing our runways and, and lighting projects that we've had out there. But I do know from, from being in several meetings that that's a big part of our economic development strategy for this county. So making sure that we have the land use that's adjacent to the airport, making sure that we have, maybe we need to create new land use applications that, that go around the airport. I think it's a good opportunity to, once again, obviously, look at that area. Growth capacity, this is something that, um, I, I got this actually from the new planner, our new senior planner that we hired. He had some experience with this, and I, I really liked it. But it's an opportunity for us to look at, um, all of our, all the things that we have in the county. Are we capable of growing? What is our growth capacity? I mean, are we, how do we look from our school standpoint? How do we look from a land standpoint? Do we have enough land to grow? Are we doing it the right way? So growth capacity is, is one way. So growth capacity is, is one way. Things that we also want to look at. And then last, we're not the only ones growing. Lilinton, obviously, is growing, Dunn's starting to see some growth. All of our towns are seeing some growth. Andrew, obviously explosive growth up there, but this is an opportunity for us to look at how they're growing and making sure that we're meshing with what they're doing. And so, um, and not only them, our, our neighbors, you know, in adjacent counties, Fuquay Varina, we, we need to look at all these inter-jurisdictional areas and make sure that everything that we're doing in our plan is meshing up well because obviously the, yeah, we have county borders and county lines, but the, the growth just runs right over top of them when you get close to those areas. So, um, that was, that was our last theme that we think we'll look at and we're obviously open. This isn't a, you know, this isn't the last list of this, this is just the things that we're seeing. How long will it take us to do this? This is a pretty drawn out process and we're hoping to do a, a big time update. So we're excited about, uh, the idea of, of this. So we anticipate this is going to be a, a 12 to maybe, uh, 13 month, maybe a little over a year process to, to get to this. It just depends, a lot of this depends on our consultant, whatever consultant that we bring in to help us do this and, uh, and what their timeline, uh, shows on how fast we can get through this process. We want to get this thing in place as quickly as we can, but we also don't want to rush it. We want to make sure that we get a good product at the end of the day. I would, I was thinking about this earlier, this is probably the most aggressive and largest plan that any, uh, that we've ever done in this county. It would be my guess. And so this is probably the biggest thing that we've ever done to really make a large step at looking at how we're growing and, uh, and, and doing something about it. So we don't want to rush it, but we do want to get to the end of it fairly, as, as, as fairly quick as we can because we do have a lot of stuff going on in our department. So, um, Sarah Arbor, who's our recent planner too here, she will be, uh, she will be our liaison, so you'll probably hear from her during this process along with myself and Jay as well. Um, but, uh, she was, that, that, that position was just recently added to our department and so that's going to serve as our long range planning position. So this will be a big, be a big job for her for the next coming year or so. And that's it. I'm available for any questions, comments.
Any questions, uh, for Mr. Locklear about this?
I don't have any questions, but I do want to say that I like the plan. I like the direction that you're going in, but I want to stress one thing that I think is real important to, to stress, and that is affordable housing for Harnett County. We do not have affordable housing in this county for the majority of our citizens. The houses that are being built here in this county, not affordable for the average citizen, not even for, I think that our teachers, uh, because of salaries. So I would hope that you all would think about this and put this, put a checkmark around that particular area. Because the land, I see the developers are just going behind with all this land and stuff in this county and, uh, uh, you're not going to leave us anything to, to, uh, uh, to concentrate or to think about building something that's very needed, needed in this county. Haven't seen affordable houses in this county for many, many years. And I would go back to the years of what is FHA loans and all that stuff when the federal government was, uh, coming in and giving, uh, low income citizens homes. I'm, I'm told that, um, just a mobile home trailer now costs you about $2,000 to rent a month. Who can afford that? So I'm just asking you, I like your plan, I like the direction that you're going in, but think about these things too. We got to think about our citizens here in this county, you know? I may not be sitting up here in January or whatever, but I, that's, that's something I'm not focusing on. I'm focused and I'm here for the citizens, so I'm just asking you all to focus on this.
I hear you loud and clear and like I said, it's, it's one of the new sections that, that will be in the plan.
I do have one, one question, Mark. Um, and I know you've, I know you, you and your team have spent time working out that timeline, but I would like for you to go back and see if you maybe could content, condense that timeline a couple of months. Uh, and the reason I say that, kind of alluded to a point Commissioner McCoy just brought up, are there three of us that'll be up for reelection? So you could possibly have, uh, a, a, a new, three new members sit here voting on a plan that's been in over a year of development and really new to everything. So, uh, that, that's why I would throw that out there for, for your consideration.
Absolutely. We'll look at it and see if we can get it done.
That was good. Instead of starting in January, could we start in December?
In other words, could it be completed so the group could, uh, make a decision on that maybe in November before, if any turnover occurs, or if that occurs?
Okay. Yeah, we, we've already kind of started the process to kind of put the information in it together to go out for the request and so, um, yeah, we can expedite that as, as soon as we can. You know, we're all at the mercy of, everybody on, on earth is doing something right now, it feels like, but, uh, we'll, we'll see what we get back, not a problem. And I'll, I'll obviously keep the board, uh, updated on that.
And, and, you know, if we don't get there, we don't get there, but at least having that as a goal, I think.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, absolutely. It's, it, it, it always helps when the, you know, leadership stays in place, so.
And I agree with what Commissioner McCoy said about the affordable housing. That's why, um, I pointed the committee to look at affordable housing and I hope that you, uh, you will reach out to that committee for their inputs.
Oh, there'll be all kinds of stakeholders and, and different avenues for all these different aspects of the plan. So, um, yeah, you'll, you'll certainly be involved with all that, all those different things. And we always love it when we have a, a commissioner on, on all the different aspects of, as being stakeholders, because then you have some, you know, input in it and it really makes it, it makes it easier for us.
Think of affordable housing, I guess two commissioners.
Yeah.
I'm not sure who else is.
Yes.
Assistant manager Price is on it.
I'm on it.
Yep. You're on it, yeah, that's right. You're sitting in the room next to me.
And about a half a dozen others there on the agenda as well.
And I thank you. Can we get a list of who's on that?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll send out the list.
I thank you for putting the committee together because, um, very important. I'm very passionate about this, so please don't get mad with me if I come to you and say, what's going on with this? Because you know me.
That's fine, absolutely. The, uh, it's always good when you have a committee in place like that. You don't have to round it up. Everybody's already heading in that direction and so it makes it easier in the process and hopefully it'll make it go a lot smoother, go a lot smoother. Jay, Jay would be mad at me if I didn't mention this last slide here. Does anybody know where, where that is?
Is that Campbell?
Any additional questions? Mr. Locklear?
Do we, uh, we don't need to expedite this really, because we got a whole nother year. December 24th? Yeah, that's true.
All right, thank you, Mr. Locklear.
It looks like it might be Campbell University to me. Y'all have me worried there for a minute.
We're gonna get surprised.
Is that snow?
It's a comprehensive plan.
Or, or maybe a Woods Creek Academy at that time.
Yeah, we, we will want to have, we'll put a simple motion together for the next meeting because we are allocating $300,000 of fund balance, uh, to go ahead and move forward with this plan immediately. And so we'll have a budget amendment that relates to that on the agenda next week.
Thanks, sir.
Do we want that to go on consent?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Fouts, you want to talk about, uh, some ARPA issues?
Indeed. Good morning, good morning. Uh, as you all know, we are moving forward with the implementation of the county's allocation of $26.4 million from the American Rescue Plan Act. Um, so the property management policy before you is one of just a few policies that the county should adopt, um, just to make sure that we're in compliance with federal uniform guidance guidelines, um, requirements, rather. So, um, we are in the process of purchasing Viper radios from Motorola, um, for the county EMS and also local fire departments.
I think you, I think we're getting feedback from the outside. I think that's what they want. I'm sorry.
Testing, testing, is that better? Okay. Um, okay, great. So, um, part of our ARPA funds are going to purchasing Viper radios for the county EMS and also local fire departments. And so this is, that's the main reason we're pushing this policy through at this time. Um, so in order to be compliance with federal requirements, we need to retain title to all of the Viper radios and associated equipment, so batteries, chargers, et cetera, um, through the award period. Um, so we can still purchase them, keep them in our title, but we can lease them out to local fire departments. And so this, um, specifically section four of this policy, we have a provision about leasing equipment. Um, and so that just little blurb will give us the authority to lease the equipment out to fire departments, um, for whom we are purchasing the radios and equipment for. Um, and so we will lease the radios out through October, just kidding, December 31st, 2026. And then after that date, when the ARPA award period is over, we can then transfer ownership to the local fire departments. So we are requesting approval of this policy just to make sure we are in, um, in compliance with federal requirements and I'm open to any more questions.
Any questions for Ms. Fouts? Everyone's in agreement with this policy, approving this policy? We'll put it on the consent agenda for Monday and approve it at that time.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Trout.
Thank you, Chair. Um, a couple of months ago, I had a meeting with the mayor of town Broadway, um, Mr. Andrews, and he brought forward to me a request of, of a resolution of support for the Seminole Road area that is inside Harnett County. They're seeing growth there and expect additional housing units and they were requesting of the DOT to move their speed limit down to 35. And so we're requesting, uh, your support to send in a letter of support to the DOT for their, to assist them in hopefully getting that changed.
Everyone in agreement with, uh, this resolution, requesting DOT to move the speed limit to 35, Seminole Road? Okay? Consensus of the board is they're, they're in agreement with that, so we'll put it on the consent agenda for Monday. Thanks, sir. All right. Mr. Trout, I believe you're up again.
I am. Um, a couple of months ago, I started having discussions with Sheriff Coats related to, uh, the recruiting and retention issues that were occurring in his office. We all know from numerous reports that hiring and retaining, uh, law enforcement officers is a challenge at this point in time. One of the things that was identified is that there are a number of counties adjacent to us that, uh, had higher salaries than we had. And so through the discussion, we looked at the possibility of doing some increases to salary for those law enforcement officers, not to mention also the detention officers and also our emergency communicators that we have that work in our 911 system. Those needs are very prevalent. I included in the memo, the vacancy numbers that we currently have in each of those areas. Feel like the time is now, even though we're in the, about to embark on a compensation study to determine appropriate salaries for all positions within the county, that this time, the need is greater enough at this point to consider increasing salaries for these positions prior to the completion of the compensation study. At the time of the completion of compensation study, we'll be able to, uh, look at the raises if this is approved and compare them to what the study shows and determine if further adjustments need to be made or if we're on par with where we need to be. The proposal would do a 5% increase in November, or excuse me, yes, November 16th of 2022 and then a 5% increase in March 16th of 2022. So basically a 10% increase by the end of the year. Um, I've put numbers as it relates to the cost to do such change. Um, we're looking at, uh, total costs of this year's budget, a $597,513.56. But I also wanted to improve, to show you what the impact would be to the budget as we go into '24 and it's, uh, $1,324,508. And it's important to understand that a decision made now will also impact future budgets so that we understand that. But given the nature of, uh, our needs, the desire to have safety within our county, we felt like it's important to take a look at this now and consider it, um, and hopeful that it will make an impact in us being able to recruit and retain officers in other positions within our law enforcement areas. Sheriff Coats, that's the nuts and the bolts. I can let, uh, obviously Sheriff Coats invite him to come forward and make comments related to what he's seeing and why he's wanting to see this change and requesting this from the board.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank y'all for, uh, allowing us to speak and I want to thank, uh, county manager Brent Trout, uh, for sitting down with us and listening and, and looking at his, he got the numbers, I'm not sure if you have them, uh, but it is harder to retain officers. Uh, in fact, this morning, or not just this morning, but yesterday, I've got two retiring. One's retiring, um, this month and I've got one retiring in January and I had one to leave this week that it went to Sanford where he's getting $52,000. So it's getting harder and harder. Um, Sampson County is the only one below us. I did join in seven counties. We've got some great officers here and we need to keep them here. I appreciate, uh, having a county manager and a board that is willing to sit down and listen and see what we need because it's obvious you cannot go in this county or any county and not have law enforcement. And again, we've got good officers. We don't need to be losing them to other agencies. Just out here in the courthouse parking lot, you'll see three Holly Spring police cars because they start them at, uh, about $54,000. So, uh, again, I appreciate y'all sitting here and listening to what we, what I'm battling. Uh, I'm not asking for a raise. I want this raise for the men. I, I, I've been very blessed, but the men and women out there, the ones who are protecting the citizens of this county. So I thank you for the time. I thank county manager Brent Trout for looking and recognizing that we do need this and I'm, any questions you have, I'm, I'm here.
Mr. Chairman, I would say I'm in full support of this. This past week, I've actually talked with several, uh, I guess, leadership in, in the sheriff's department. I even spoke to a lieutenant over at the, at the detention center and he told me that he is losing a lot of his, his guys. Um, just told me that I guess one of his, one of your guys who, which I guess is a long time for a detention officer, I guess a year, um, is just gotten two offers, I think from Hoke and actually I believe Sampson County as well. And they were about $6,000 more. So it's not a, I think it is a financial issue that we're dealing with here and we do need to be competitive, especially with the growth that we're having. Um, because these guys are leaving and I mean, for five, six, seven, $10,000, I would have to as well.
Yes, sir. Chairman, I was just thinking, you know, it's getting harder and harder for Harnett County to hire, train and retain these officers because of the salary adjustments between departments. But I'd be totally behind this myself.
Um, I would say that, um, it is shameful that we are losing our, um, deficits and all to, to surrounding counties and small, much smaller than Harnett County because of, um, salaries. And I realize that, uh, in, in this day and time with the economy the way it is, uh, people have to leave. And, uh, but I'm in agreement with this, but for many years, I've been sitting on this podium here, uh, discussing our county employees and their salaries. So I would like for you to look into, uh, if we are compatible with their salaries compared to other counties, because that's important too. I, I'm not going to stand in, in the way of to shift, uh, the dividends, getting an increase in pay because I know that they need it, but we need But we need to start thinking about our other employees in this county and their needs and their salaries, what they're carrying home, especially in this, uh, in this time, uh, economy, economy. I'm grateful that we did give them an increase this February. But I'm saying that, that does, does not need to stop. We, we are, um, receiving new people in this county every single day. So our tax base is really going up. Or how are we going to do this? But I'm actually just start thinking in terms of, uh, county employees as well. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Commissioner McCoy. Anything else? Um, so what I'm hearing is the consensus of the board is to approve this, uh, salary plan for the, uh, Harnett County Sheriff's Office. That being the consensus of the board, uh, we, we will add it to the consent agenda for approval on Monday.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Had to check with Miss Kimberly over there real quick. Had to give her the eyes, is that all right?
I would hope we'd already checked, but we haven't got here. All right, Mr. Trout.
Thank you. Our next item, um, also relates to salaries. So as we went through the process, you received a memo, um, related to a request from Harnett County School District to, uh, look into the increase in the amount of money that we're providing for them as it relates to their classified employees. Um, we approved part of the funding for that during the budget time. But in further discussion with, um, with school officials, it was determined that that would end up putting them on a compressed scale, um, which would not be beneficial in the long term related to the retention of their employees. With the changes that the state made to require all employees to have at least fifteen dollars an hour or four percent increase, that has caused a compression to occur within their employee's schedule. So what we've looked into, um, the help of, uh, finance officer Honeycutt and, uh, the finance officer from the school, they were able to pull together what is a recommendation related to option three, to add an additional seven hundred thousand in funding to the school district to assist them with their salary issues for their classified employees. And so, um, we would look at, obviously this would come from fund balance for this year and then we would incorporate it into the calculations of the budget, um, in, in next year. It's a very detailed memo that shows the, the information as it relates to the choice that we've made and the impacts on the financial. But a lot of these employees are vital to the school district in order to keep their operations going.
Comments or questions, uh, concerning this matter?
Can you explain what this would go to? The school system?
Right, for their, their classified employees, which are, um, or I don't understand exactly how to explain what classified employees are.
Understand.
Okay.
Basically cafeteria workers, custodians, maintenance, transportation.
The behind the scenes persons for this organization.
By all means, I approve. Thank you. I ain't going to say nothing else.
Well, if, uh, consensus of the board is to approve this, uh, request and, uh, we'll add it to the consent agenda for Monday and I vote to approve it at that time. All right, thank you Commissioners. All right, Mr. Hall.
Seems like everybody's going pretty quick and easy, so hopefully mine will be that way too. Today, uh, I'm just coming before you to talk about a, uh, an RFP that we sent out earlier in September timeframe, um, around fiber that we're going to try and, or that we're going to put across the river again. We're going between Harnett Regional Water Plant and Alexander Drive. Um, and this will create a new loop for us and give us a better posture cybersecurity wise and give us some more opportunities to keep our communication up during emergencies and everything like that. So it just keeps us in a redundant possibility. So on page thirty one in the agenda, um, package, I gave you a list of, uh, cost comparisons. Uh, we only had two respondents. Prior to me putting the RFP out, I did, uh, ask for bids back on this. And after discussing with finance, um, we had to put the RFP out just because of the cost level. Um, so I did have three bids or, uh, cost proposals before that, but the only two of the three actually responded to the RFP. So, um, I, I do have a third comparison and all the pricing was within, within reason. All of this funding is coming from supplanted loss revenue out of the art funds, um, which was approved, um, last March or April timeframe. Um, so all that's, we've already got the budget for it. Uh, we, we were approved at two hundred and thirty thousand dollars roughly for the art funding. And as you can see, we're below that amount. So that should free up some money to go back to other projects that we have available too. Um, so, uh, you know, on page one thirty two, uh, I just went through some of my selection criteria, just my top, um, top things that I cared about during the RFP process. Overall cost were, of course, number one at twenty five percent rating. Um, and they, uh, you can, that's an easy one. So the, uh, performance cabling systems, um, actually was the best cost. Company experience, both companies have, um, responded, were very experienced in putting fiber in and, um, have done work, uh, for local government for several years. Technical details, the proposal, um, and you can kind of go through all that. I'll kind of skip down to references. Um, references is where, um, the performance cabling kind of shined, uh, a little bit more. I had spoke to two local governments that have current contracts with them and are very, very happy with the services. Uh, one was Raleigh and one was Winston-Salem. And we, they do work in Fuquay and other surrounding areas, but those are the two that I actually contacted. So they, you know, that's the reason why their references are rated higher. The other, uh, company, uh, Peoples Fiber, Peoples Fiber Company, their references were good, but none of them were recent contracts or recent, uh, uh, construction projects going on. And the only thing that, uh, I hate is Mr., Mr. Jimmy Peoples Fiber Company has been doing work with us for about a decade now. So he knows our fiber structure. Uh, he knows everything in and out. And so he, that's, that's a huge benefit to us. But based on cost and the experience of the other company, I just, I, I cannot recommend him as the overall winner of this, uh, response. RFP response. So just some of the pros and cons on the next page. And basically I've kind of gone over that. So come before you today to ask for approval to move forward with performance cabling systems to put this next round of fiber in for us to create another loop on the, across the river, basically, for Harnett County and Littleton area.
Any questions or comments from the board?
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
I've seen cloud wise trucks.
Yes.
About in the town area. What are they doing?
They're rolling out, uh, they're, they're putting, they may have some customers on now. Um, I have not heard officially that they have some residential customers, but they had several that they were looking at implementing sometime in the last few weeks. Um, so now within Littleton area in the northwest part of the county, around Oak Ridge Tower, um, they have some abilities to put, uh, fixed wireless customers onboard. And they're actually in the, coming from the Dunn, Irwin, in the Coates area with fiber as hard as they can. Um, they, they're on the agenda in the Irwin Town Hall to get some, uh, fiber facilities set up there and some, and some land in Irwin.
It's a good thing. It's really a good thing because we, we are doing what we are committed to do, so.
Yeah.
When I see those trucks, I'm just excited.
Yes, yeah, it's really, I'm hoping, I keep thinking we're going to put together a nice formal, uh, announcement, but we're not quite to that point yet. So maybe in the next month or so, I'll be able to come before you guys and we'll have a ribbon cutting, uh, ceremony at some point with Cloudwise and may be able to kind of announce that stuff. That's, it's really exciting that it's coming together.
I think that would be great because, um, the citizens are still interested in what we're doing. We're bringing broadband to this county. It's been a long struggle.
Yeah. And we've had several other productive meetings with some other companies too. So they're just not quite as far movement, as much movement as Cloudwise, so.
I thank you because when I saw that truck, I'd seen it several times. Cloudwise. So we're doing what we say we're going to do. So thank you so much.
Yep. Any other questions about this?
Any other questions or comments? I guess we need to approve, uh, awarding this contract.
That'd be great. That's what I'm asking on May on the consent agenda.
Uh, if consensus of the board is to approve, to, uh, award this contract to performance cabling, we will add that to the consent agenda for Monday.
Awesome, thank you.
Thanks, sir. All right. Is anybody here from the sheriff's department? They all leave?
Yes, I guess Mr. McPean left. I thought he was going to be here to present that. Go back, it is some funding that they are receiving from, uh, North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. It relates to, um, COVID nineteen supports and testing equipment and so forth that they'll receive funding for, um, in, for their department. It's a, if I remember right, it'd say no cost, um, grant for us. Trying to find the data. It was an item that we added at the very end of the agenda.
Is there any matching on this?
I don't believe so.
But this is COVID, uh, this is our performance?
Missing the file. Print that one off, so. You got it up there? Oh, okay. So yeah, so that's.
No, no local or match funding required.
Right.
Any, any questions or comments about this, about accepting this, uh, this grant? Add that to the consent agenda for approval on Monday then.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move to viewing applications to serve on boards and committees. Do we have an opening on the Board of Adjustment?
Question back from the seat in the. Opening on the Board of Adjustment?
I believe we approved that last meeting.
For Mr. Pope?
Not for Mr., we did an alternate, I believe, at the last, uh, work session. Mr. Pope.
Right, it's alternate. It was alternate.
Yes, Mr. Pope's term is expiring.
Okay.
And he served one term, so he is eligible for reappointment.
Right, and I, and I have no objection to, uh, John being reappointed.
Okay, all right. So we'll add that to the consent agenda.
I would like, I've got something to say, Mr. Chairman. Last month, we had approved Ms. Tanya Gray for the Sand Hills Mental Health, uh, Board, for the Sand Hills Board of Directors. She has put in her resignation for that. You guys are tracking that or not?
Okay.
I can get that. It was sent to Ms. Victoria Witt and I can get a copy of that for you. But we are going to need to get somebody else. To assist with that position, please.
Okay.
So we need to, uh, accept her resignation.
Okay.
Get that to you.
Thank you.
We'll add that to the consent agenda.
Will do.
The, um, Home and Community Care Block Grant.
I'd like to apologize because at the last work session, we were talking about that committee and two suggestions were made. And, um, there was some confusion about the type of vacancies that were available. There's one older consumer position and one Harnett County Employee Representative member. So I apologize. That's why we have it listed, um, that we've received, you know, the two applications for the older consumer position. And then there's also an application that was received for the employee who's a current employee for the county, um, member position. That's where the confusion was, so I apologize for that.
Okay, we have, uh, actually, we have, uh, an applicant from District One for the older consumer member and an applicant from, uh, District Two, consumer member. Commissioner McCoy, um, do Commissioner Johnson want to discuss this and come back to us or? How do you want to do this?
Well, I don't know the applicant from District Two at all. No contact.
Okay.
Or nothing.
I know this lady here, uh, uh, from District One. And I'm very much in favor of, uh, her serving in this position because she has contributed a lot to the community. And I'm sure that she will be, uh, contribute a lot to the county. I'm, I'm just saying that I think she is, will be the ideal person to serve on this committee. And that is, uh, Rosa M. Smith-Williams. Dr. Williams. Her name is Dr. Williams.
As they, as they, what would be the consensus of the board to? Since, uh, Commissioner Johnson doesn't know, uh, Ms. Mangum, Commissioner McCoy does know Dr. Smith-Williams. Is the consensus of the board, or would the consensus of the board be to approve Dr. Smith-Williams?
I have no contest.
Okay. If you will put that on the consent agenda. And then, um, what about, um, what about, um, Mr. Tony? On the Harnett County Veteran Services? Are you agreeable with that, Commissioner McCoy?
So he would be serving in a different position, right? He would serve on that board in the veteran services.
Right, yes.
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, all right. So if you'll add that also?
Okay.
And, um, no action on the, uh, Board of Equalization and, and review it, uh, at this time? We don't have anybody applied for the Triangle South Workforce Development Board, okay? The, uh, Mid-Carolina Aging Advisory Committee. We've received a resignation from Shirley Allen. So just put that on, accept her resignation. Consent agenda. And then the Board of Health, um, I guess, uh, John Rouse's, uh, spoke in favor of Dr. Langdon and Dr. Fowler.
Correct.
Anybody have any objections to these, uh, people being appointed?
No, I don't. I know both of them. They're good, they're very good at that position.
All right, we'll add those to the consent agenda and that'll take care of that.
Do we have Ms. Tanya Gray on the consent as well? Her resignation?
Yeah, we, that's on the consent agenda to accept her, uh, resignation. All right. Great. Mr. Trout, county managers report.
Did we talk about the, uh, uh, reappointment for the Sand Hill Center, second page?
We don't have anybody to reappoint. We're just going to accept her resignation. I, I mean, i- if you have somebody.
I was looking at what was on page two here.
Yeah.
Ms. Gray.
She had, we thought we were going to reappoint her, but she has sent.
He's sent. I got you. Thank you.
Like the following week.
She's been on that board for a while, so she doesn't know when I was on it.
Thank you.
The only item I have, uh, we've already had a good meeting. Then all I add is that as we go into next meeting, we'll start our discussion related to the capital improvement plan, budget. And so there'll be a, a short presentation related to it and then a longer discussion at the November fourteenth. So, but now begins the process for the CIP coming up next week. Excited with the list of projects that we have. We've been able to take some funding from a variety of areas and, um, I think we have to fund a number of projects, uh, that we've been considering for a while. And so I'm looking forward to discussing those projects and seeking your consideration of them at that time. time.
Let's see, December, December the 5th, we have the regular board meeting. The 13th, we have a work session. The 19th, we're scheduled to have a board meeting. I think we need to maintain that schedule. If somebody has an objection. Then after the Christmas holidays, we have a work session for the 28th. I guess we can decide on the 19th that we need to hold that work session.
Yep, I agree.
Is the board agreeable with that?
What was the date, the December 5th?
December the 5th and 19th for a, December the 5th is 9:00 a.m., December the 19th is 6:00 p.m. Those are regular meetings. And then the 13th would be a work session.
13th of January?
December 13th.
December 13th.
Right, and then because of the holiday schedule, the meeting that should be on the 27th is actually scheduled for the 28th.
Right.
And I think the chair is looking at, as we may not want to meet or feel a need to meet on the 28th, we'll work as staff to make sure that we're, as we look at items for December, that we're front-loading them, so that maybe that gives us that opportunity.
Yeah, if we've got something that we need to discuss on the 29th, then.
Yes.
We'll meet, if not, Merry Christmas. All right. Anything else come before the board this morning? We do not have need for a closed session, so with that in mind, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I make motion to adjourn.
Have a motion and second. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
And we are adjourned.